To the May 24th meeting of the Penn Field Board of Education, I now call the meeting to order at 6:34 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is recommended that the board approve the May 24th agenda as submitted. So we have a motion and a second, that the agenda of May 24th, 2022 be approved as submitted.
Some will second.
Any questions or comments? Call those in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. This week, at this meeting, we have a public hearing on the district emergency response plan. This is a, we will have a hearing today and then there will be a period of public comment and we'll be voting on this, I believe, in August. Is that correct? So, Dr. Prueville?
Good evening, everyone. Board of Ed, we'd like to welcome Mr. English up to the podium to do his presentation on the district emergency response plan. And we also have Brandon Fox as well joining him. Sorry, Brandon. Your clicker should be working.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here. We are required to present this on an annual basis. We'll go through some of the requirements and why we're here. There really are no changes from last year. So it will be quick and we will be out of here. So that'll make everybody happy. So. The district emergency response plan is required by New York State Commissioner's Regulation. It's also required by the Safe Schools Against Violence in Education, the safe law, save law, excuse me. We do share it with the New York State Police, with the Sheriff's Office and the Brighton Police for their review. So they're aware of what our actions would be in certain emergencies. We do provide it to New York State Education Department. That's required. And then it's also required that the district appoint a chief emergency officer. So Superintendent Dr. Putnam is our CEO in more ways than one. So he is our chief emergency officer too. So the district has chosen him for that position.
There are certain pieces that are required by the state and you can see those in the bullet points that have to be covered in that district-wide safety plan. Ours, of course, are and have been since the plan has been in place.
So as I stated already, there have, the only thing we changed this year were the dates, updated the dates in the plan. And then each year, we do, are required by New York State Commissioner's Regulation and the save law. And we need to review the following on an annual basis. And Brandon will touch on those.
Yes, so as you addressed, they'll be open for the next, actually more than 30 days for public comment because this will be voted on at the August 16th board meeting this summer. Public comments can be addressed to at district office. And we'll certainly be here and available to answer any of those questions in the meantime or board members' questions tonight.
So that's, that's all we have for tonight.
That is it. And the board, we have the material, we've got the plan. Is, board members, are there any questions?
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Don't go too far because as part of this hearing, it is open to public comment. So if anyone would like to make a, come up and speak on specifically the district emergency response plan, they may do so. Additionally, residents who wish to comment on the plan may email the district clerk, Sharon Urk Fitz, by June 23rd, 2022. So if anyone wanted to comment on the, at this time, on the emergency response plan. And again, you can send your comments in. You have over a month, roughly a month to do that as well. All right, seeing none, I call the hearing closed at 6:40 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now into regular business. It is recommended that the board approve the following consent agenda. And that is the approval of the minutes of May 3rd and May 19th as submitted, the acceptance of the recommendation from the Committee on Special Education, acceptance recommendations from the Committee on Special, Preschool Special Education, the acceptance recommendations from Superintendent for Personnel Changes as revised, and the request to approve the bidders that you have listed for the various quotes. So we have a motion and a second, that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda.
Some moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? Call those in favor. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Treasure report, no treasure report, no special report, which takes us quickly to, did I miss one?
We have two special reports.
Oh, I pushed, oh, thank you. Thank you, thank you. We do have a special report, which is a very special report. I'm sorry, I can't believe I missed that. So the first part of our special report is a robotics presentation. And please come on up. Thank you for joining us. This is one of the highlights of the year for us.
It's one of ours too. All right. There we go. Hi, everyone. My name's Nicole. I'm part of Team 1511, Rolling Thunder. That's the Penn Field Robotics team here at the high school. I'm a senior here. I'm the team captain. I am a mechanical design lead and I'm also a part of the outreach sub-team.
Hi, I'm Nick. I'm a junior on the team. I'm our communications coordinator, social media coordinator, and I am a mechanical sub-team co-lead. So a little bit of a breakdown of our team. We are 35 students. Thirteen of those students are new, 27 mentors. Six of those are L3 Harris employees. We have 19 community mentors, seven alumni mentors, eight alumni parent mentors, and we have our two teachers, Mr. Wisebroad and Mr. Pizzo.
So you might have heard a little bit about our season already, but this year we competed at three different events. We competed at two regional events. One of them being the FLL, as we call it, Finger Lakes Regional, that happens at RIT, where we were six seeded Alliance captains, which basically means we get to pick with eight other teams, we get to pick our alliance that we compete in finals with. We also won the Excellence in Engineering Award at this event, which deems a team that has a really great engineering design process, recognizes that team. We have our first Dean's List Award finalist, Nick, here with us today, who has recognized at this event for all of his hard work and throughout all his seasons. We also have Volunteer of the Year Award winner Larry Lewis with us today. He is our team leader. He got an award for all of his hard work for getting this event run. We also went to the Pittsburgh Regional, so we also placed seventh as Alliance captains there. But more notably, we won the Regional Chairman's Award, which qualified us for the Houston Championships. There at the championships, we played in the roving division with teams from across the world and we were Chairman's Award finalists.
So what does it mean to be Championship Chairman's Award finalists? So the Chairman's Award is the most prestigious award in firsts and it recognizes a team that embodies the mission of first and is a role model for other teams. Just to give that win a little bit more context, there are 3,225 FRC teams from 26 countries at the world championship level. We competed with teams all over the world from Australia and Israel and Turkey and Brazil, just to name a few. And that means we are top six in the world for Chairman's wins and, or championship Chairman's finalists, rather. We have the second most Chairman's wins in the world, 10 wins out of our 18 seasons. And one of the reasons that attributes to that is our on average 54 outreach events per year.
So to talk a little bit more about what makes our team a Chairman's team is a lot about our community outreach. Throughout the year, we work with a lot of different local organizations and charities like the Penn Field Rec and Library, Ronald McDonald House. There's a few more on that list, but the list does go on. We really strive to create a community where we feel that our team is welcome, that all of our students are welcome, and to get this sort of STEM curriculum out to the world.
As part of that, we also have events for all levels of first. We mentor teams grades two through 12. We have 134 first students in the district, 15 FLL Discover students, 30 FLL Explore students. Both of those programs are run through the Penn Field Rec Department, 76 FLL First Lego League Challenge students, 14 First Tech Challenge students, and 29 First Robotics Competition students.
Another thing that makes our team great is we do a lot of advocacy efforts. So we've been advocating at the state and national level for STEM funding in schools. We also run two different events regarding those two things, which are the National Advocacy Conference, which we've been running for eight years. That takes place in DC every summer. And we also do the New York Advocacy Conference. We've been working to pass New York State Bill A1219, which grants new first teams $5,000 to start teams in underrepresented areas. You can see in that picture there on the right, that was actually us last week, exactly last week, where we went to Albany and we got November 8th declared as Steam Day in New York State. So hopefully you'll be hearing some more about that. But that's just a little bit of what makes our team great.
All right, so now to a little bit more of the robot focused stuff. So for our typical build season, we get the game in January and it lasts about six to eight weeks until our first competition, which is usually the Finger Lakes Regional. During that time, the average student puts in 28 hours a week and student leads like myself and Nicole put in about 50 hours a week. So that's almost like a full-time job on top of school, keeping up with assignments, part-time jobs and other activities. And during that time, students are learning about the engineering design process, CAD design, machining parts, programming, marketing, photography, video editing, and the list goes on. And we apply the skills that we learn in the classroom to build our robot.
So as you can probably tell, there's a lot of different benefits that our students gain from these programs. Students get to attend and present at national conferences. I know personally I presented at 12, make this 13, different conferences and events over my time since freshman year, which of course helps with public speaking skills and competence, which also helps us in our future careers, including in college, where there are over $80 million worth of first scholarships. So a lot of the students that graduate from this team go on to colleges and then they get those first scholarships, which helps them get a cheaper education. It also helps strengthen our resumes, of course. And once we graduate the team, over 75% of our alumni are in the STEM field, either employed or as students. And employers include L3 Harris and NASA and Amazon, to name a few. Last year, we did have a video of Shawna, who works in the International Space Station. She sort of zoomed in for us there. But it's just, it's amazing what our graduates have been able to do.
So not only are we teaching leadership skills within the team and building skills for our careers, we are also leaders in the first community. We build leaders on the team and help other teams as well. So first and foremost, we are a student-run and mentor-guided team. We have a leadership boot camp that we host annually, where we teach our leadership team about teamwork and how to effectively run. And we will also provide resources to other teams to help run their own leadership boot camps. That also talks about our student leadership team. We currently have eight members with roles ranging from events coordinator to first coordinator to our team captain. And we also have the Robotics Board of Representatives, which is an organization of students, parents and teachers, that kind of interacts with the school district to make sure we are aligning with district policies and we're kind of following in that line there. And we also did a leadership presentation at CHAMP's. We have built such a strong reputation in the first community that teams think of us as a strong leadership team. And we gave a presentation about our system and how all that stuff works. And it was like standing room only, like it was just packed. So many people came in to listen to what we had to say. They were asking questions even after the event, asking for contact information, and we are always more than happy to provide it.
So just to give a little bit of a wrap up, some of the clarifications about our team is that we do more than just build robots. As we've seen, we do outreach, business, advocacy, marketing, we do media, we do presentations, we attend conferences, the list goes on and on. We also build and design our robot, which you'll see in a second here, from scratch. So we don't get any set of instructions. We don't get any pre-built parts. This is just pen and paper all the way to this completed product that we have over there. We also run events year-round and do meetings year-round. So there really is no off-season for the robotics team, which is super fun and the time flies by, but yes, it doesn't really stop. And another thing is that all are welcome. We are super inclusive for all interests, regardless of previous experience. You don't have to be a tech kid if you want to join the team. We really have roles for everyone and we are super excited to get anyone onto our team.
Some next steps that we would like to take to further enhance our competitiveness and our impact throughout the community would be a year-round practice facility for all levels of first. So that way, we can not only practice with our robot, but also have all levels of first in one building. So that way, we're all interacting and the FLL First Lego League students can see what we're doing and we can see what they're doing. And it would just create a better environment for all levels to kind of come together. Also, we would like first robotics in district curriculum. So that way, the skills that we learn through first are further integrating with the curriculum. So that way, it carries over to the first programs that students attend after school and, in our case, on the weekends. Also, a first robotics day for the district, where we could work with teams in our district from all levels to target elementary schools and middle schools and introduce a whole new audience of students to what this program is about and get more students part of it. We'd also like to kind of support that effort, increase teacher involvement, because we need teachers to interface with the school district, to get into the building, get classrooms and set that thing, that stuff up for these teams. And also support for other levels of first, because we have our FLL coordinator down at the middle school. She is a teacher and she's retiring, so we need people to fill those roles. So that way, all these amazing programs that we have don't fall through, because that is the last thing we want to happen.
So we would like to welcome you all to attend any of our team meetings. We do meet on Tuesday nights. So you just give us a little bit of an email, a little heads up that you're coming down and we would love to show you, give you a tour of our shop, let you all know what we do. Another event that we have coming up recently is our first night, which is June 8th at 6:30. So any of you who maybe know kids who might be interested, or anyone watching at home who has kids interested in the first robotics program, this is a great event for people to come to. It's happening at the middle school. So this introduces everyone to their different levels of first. We also have our Grateful Red Music Festival happening on August 13th. So that's where we bring in robots and food trucks and local bands and it's a whole lot of fun. We raise money for the Ronald McDonald House. We have Ruckus Rally and Rumble, which are three different first robotics competition off-seasons. And we also have a ton of different outreach events that you're all welcome to come to, but those are just a few of them that are noteworthy. I guess if you have any questions, now would be a great time, or you can save that for after we introduce our robot.
Anyone ask questions now, or you want to see the show first?
Let's see the show.
All right. In that case, over there is the show, as we lovingly call it, turbulence, and our robot demo team. So take it away, guys.
So you'll see our robot intaking balls from the ground. It then will shoot it into a goal during the competition. Hopefully it shoots it toward one of our team members. There you go. So it shoots it into either a higher or low goal during the competition and we earn points that way and we compete with other teams to do so.
Nicole, what was the challenge this year? What was the challenge this year?
So our game this year was to design a robot that scored into a lower and upper goal throughout the rest of the match. We do that autonomously and driver-controlled. You can see they're playing with PlayStation controllers over there. We also, at the end of the match, had to climb using this sort of square mechanism that you see across the top. We had to climb what basically were monkey bars that were in ascending order. So they got up to like eight feet tall. So our robot had to climb those and stay on those at the end of the match.
And like we said earlier, this robot, again, starts from scratch, from ideas on a piece of paper. And then we prototype and design in CAD and continue to iterate. And this is all a student process with mentors to kind of guide us along our way. Again, a lot of the robot is student manufactured as well. So we're in the shop making the parts, putting in the hours in like the 10-week period through competition from January. More involved students are putting in like 300, 400 hours. So as you can probably imagine, this is a very involved process, but it is the hardest fun that you will ever have.
Board members. Go ahead, Catherine.
So I'm completely blown away. The robot itself is always cool, but your presentation was just off the charts. It was just fantastic. And you would never know that there was some obstacle called a pandemic, you know, in our midst during all of this. This is just, you've embraced it, you've mastered it to a point. I know that you're always striving, but this is just wonderful. I, I'm a little, I'm a little touched. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barb?
I don't have a question. I have a comment or a suggestion. And actually, I should check with Mr. English if this is possible. They're looking for a place to be one in a couple of years. Aren't we going to have a place on Five Mile Line Road that's going to be open?
Like an old bus garage?
Like an old bus garage?
That old bus garage is going to our IT department.
The whole thing?
The whole thing.
Got it. Well, we have time to talk about it. Just thought I'd, or maybe at the new bus garage?
That's where I thought you were going. I thought you were going to be like, whoa, there's going to be like.
Maybe a little. Yeah, maybe a room there. You just never know.
I'd love to have interaction, more interaction.
Yeah. Okay, so maybe at the new bus garage. So just so you know, a couple of years from now, but, and then you can put a rooftop garden on the top.
Go, Barb.
So there is, I think, there's a possibility that you can be accommodated. But that's just me. And as of June 30th, I'll be off the board, so I can't help you but.
You could make some phone calls.
I could make some phone calls.
All right. The other board members.
Great presentation. It was awesome.
I just wanted to say that, again, always this is the highlight, one of the highlights of the year for us. This, I mean, it's just phenomenal, really, what you guys do. I did get a chance to go to RIT and see you play there and the complexity of the game. I mean, it's not just, you know, you just did a very simple demonstration. It's not just take the ball and throw in a couple of little hoops. There's a lot of gameplay involved. You're with, you know, playing individually, playing with teams. The, you know, the autonomous section versus the steering section, it is very complex. And when I came to visit, I can't remember who it was, but someone gave me a tour and explained it. And they were, you know, very articulate. I can guess who it is now. I mean, very articulate, a very well-polished tour, showing me around and explaining everything. And all the things you've talked about here. I mean, this is really just, you know, it's exemplary. I wish I had it when I was young, really. So. Great, thank you.
Thank you. If you have any other questions, we'll be here around at the end of 40.
Okay, next is, if you want to follow that act. The next special report is the textbook presentation of Ms. Sheena Conway and Ms. Shane Waterson. Let me go back to this.
Clicker is activated.
There was what?
Their clicker is activated.
Oh, okay.
Yes, tough act to follow. We said that from the beginning, so. Well, good evening. Thank you for having us. We are excited to share with you 12 texts for adoption this evening. I am Sheena Conway, Director of Humanities. This is Shane Waterson, steam tosa extraordinaire. And so really, we want to just highlight the work of the K5 Humanities Committee this year, excuse me. That committee really focused on continuing the work of last year. And so, this is why I brought my water. Sorry about that. So the work that we did last year was really around bringing textbooks that align with DEI, SEL, Social Studies and Science Content Integration. And so in terms of content integration, that was really the focus last year around, we want to create this comprehensive and cohesive experience for our students. We don't want to teach social studies and science and SEL and ELA in silos, right? We want to merge those disciplines together because we know that that builds background knowledge and therefore then students really excel in terms of reading comprehension and that is the goal. So that was the bulk of work last year, but then we continued it this year as well. And so the committee met monthly, just to review and discuss what K5 texts should be adopted for this school year. It was a long list that they compiled. They were looking at over 60 texts. So really, the work of the committee was trying to refine that list and prioritize the best texts that we could, that we could adopt for this year. And I just realized I didn't have it on the right slide, so let me move it to the next one. So the criteria that we use for selection, so you'll notice a familiar image on the left-hand side there. That is the New York State Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework, the visual. And the four priorities of welcoming and inclusive, welcoming and affirming environment and inclusive curriculum and assessment. Those two priorities are the priorities that we really wanted to use and refer to when we were selecting texts. So we wanted to bring materials that affirm and support student identities. We wanted to make sure that we were adopting texts that were written by racially and culturally and linguistically diverse perspectives. We also utilized the Learning for Justice, Anti-Bias Education criteria. So you'll see their identity and diversity and justice and action. These are all things that are important to us as a district, right? But also, we want our students to feel affirmed in their identities. We want our students to really, we want to foster inner group understanding. We want to raise awareness about prejudice and injustice. And then ultimately, we want students to feel like maybe they can take action against some injustices in the world. And then finally, we also dug into an article by Rudine Sims Bishop, Windows Mirrors and Sliding Glass Doors. So sometimes books could serve as mirrors and they affirm student identities. Sometimes books allow students to have windows and to experiences or perspectives that they don't normally have access to. And then sometimes a book is so good, it's a sliding glass door. You feel like you can really step into that world. So this was the criteria that we used, really, when we were looking to select the best texts. So for K2 texts, you'll see there's seven texts here, but I'm going to just highlight a couple. So for kindergarten, we adopted, or we're seeking to adopt, the book Be Kind. And so Be Kind presents the powerful message that small acts of kindness matter and that they can build with other acts of kindness to make a difference. So the protagonist in this story, she's really trying to fix a problem. She has a friend that was embarrassed. And so through a small act of kindness, she's able to make a difference. And so this book in particular aligns with our SEL benchmarks that are incorporated into our K5 curriculum maps. And so competencies around social awareness and relationship building, we feel that this book really does a nice job with that. The next book that I'll highlight for you is What Does It Mean to Be an American? So that would be a book that we are seeking adoption for first grade. And that book really aligns with our social studies standard around American culture. So we really felt like this book supported the idea that, sure, there are common symbols in America and common ideas around, you know, what it means to be an American. But this book really does a nice job, really highlighting, it's the differences that make us stronger in America. And so really, just quoting the book, yes, we want to work hard to achieve our dreams and follow the same rules, but we really want to appreciate our differences, because that's what really contributes to the rich cultural fabric that is, is America. The next book is Jabari Jumps. I just love this book. This is for grade two. This is a book about a young boy named Jabari. And he has finished swimming lessons. He's passed his test and he's ready to challenge himself by jumping off the diving board at his local pool, community pool. As he climbs the board, he begins to wonder if this is a good idea. So he goes to his dad, who helps him find his courage and work through this fear. And so of course, this is an excellent message of just overcoming obstacles and adversity. But it also can be a mirror for our students or perhaps a window. So we thought this was an excellent text as well.
All right. I will be speaking to the four I Survived books that are depicted on this slide. So as the steam tosa, I really focus on the science integration. And this is where we're truly getting content integration, which is exciting. In third grade, for quite some time, we've had this essential question in our curriculum. How does where we live affect? How does where we live affect how we live? But it was geared solely at social studies. It was because they study the world and the continents and the geography of the world, and then they also study cultures of the world. The kids were learning, how does where you live in the world affect how you live? We're expanding that now to include the science components. The kids are learning about weather, climate, and also natural hazards in third grade for their science content. So we're using that same driving question. So as they're learning about all these weather words, they're learning about all these naturally occurring hazards and how people prepare for them and the consequences if, if you're unprepared, now kids are able to read this realistic fiction, which is going to help them tap into that background knowledge, where they are using those science words, they're seeing those science words in a realistic fiction story, and they are deepening their ability to answer that social studies question that initially we only applied to one content, and now that's the true nature of an essential question. It has so many different answers, and it applies across discipline. So we've got four different stories here, so that kids would have the opportunity to look into at least one. We're picturing this as a potentially a small reading group type of book to help with our science integration.
And so our one text that we're adopting for fourth grade, it's really a remarkable story, and even Shane and I had to actually Google it because we didn't believe it. This is a story about a woman who, at the age of 116, learned how to read. And so it's, I know, it's incredible.
I thought it was a typo. I had to look it up.
So her name was Mary Walker, and in 1848, she was born into enslavement. At age 15, she was freed. At age 20, she was married and had her first child. By age 68, she had worked numerous jobs to try to support her family. She ended up at age 114 being the last remaining member of her family, and then at age 116, she learned how to read. And so we know how this story goes. The ads were stacked against her, right? So she was born, basically, from the Civil War, right? That's the period she was born, to the Civil Rights Movement. She lived through that period of time. And so with perseverance and dedication, she proves that you're never too old to learn. But there's so many other layers to this story, and so we felt like this book really supports our grade four unit, Search for Freedom, Call for Change, where we're looking to update those collections and those, some of the texts that we're using. And so this book just has a beautiful connection to diversity, equity, and inclusion, but also the social studies content, and just what a remarkable story. So we are excited to bring this forward this evening.
So our next steps, our hope is, is that after a public review period, that these texts do get adopted. We want to include them in our summer curriculum writing process. We don't want to just hand over books and say good luck. So as we do our summer curriculum writing, our teams will come together, and we will write learning target progressions, develop resources, graphic organizers, tools that teachers can use in the classroom to really use these texts integrated in with our curriculum. We also want to continue the textbook adoption process through our summer curriculum writing. One thing we've discovered is that sometimes the teachers who are writing curriculum are not on the Humanities Committee. Sometimes it's different teachers. So we, we do want to streamline that process a little bit more, and actually have summer curriculum writers working on even more text and identifying more titles to bring forward to you, hopefully in the fall of next year. And so you will see us again soon, I hope.
Yes, hopefully throughout the year, right?
Yes.
So we just want to thank you. We want to thank the Board of Education for their support, not just for K-5 text adoption, but K-12. I mean, this is really exciting work that we've done the past few years. We've been able to bring just really engaging, high-interest texts and put them in front of students. So we just want to thank you for your ongoing support. We obviously want to thank the Humanities Committee and the teachers that filled out the textbook adoption paperwork. It is a lot of work, so they are busy, and we want to thank them. And then I, just on a personal note, would like to thank Shane, who's facilitated the textbook subcommittee and has really done a fantastic job, and could not have done the work without her. So thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions?
I have a couple of questions. One is, about how much time did you, do you think you guys put into this? Because, you know, you're not just pick a book out of Amazon, you know? How much, how much involvement? This is, you haven't even started the curriculum part. How much time have you put into this at this, up until this point in time?
It's been a year, right? It's been a year in the making. So a lot of these texts get recommended as suggestions just during curriculum writing over the summer, and throughout the year we'll hold sessions, and teachers will have an idea or a suggestion. And it's not necessarily a board-approved book that they're using. So we kind of make a mental checklist of it and, and realize that we probably should get books board-adapted, right? If we're going to put them in front of students. So it's really just compiling lists throughout the year and over, you know, the curriculum writing process. And then really, starting in September, I believe, we started with this work at our very first Humanities Committee, and we finished up what feels like just two weeks ago.
Yeah, and our librarians were very helpful in coordinating some meetings where we pooled groups of text, and then we could analyze them in terms of both their curriculum overlap and their connection to the social justice standards as well, and really tried to, then, when we're going to go do the paperwork, make sure we're bringing forward the best books that are giving us both the content and meeting our DEI goals as well.
We had a protocol, a process that we followed when we met, when we had the librarians. It was almost like a book fair that they hosted for us with the books. Physically, that helped too, to have the books physically there. And so we were really just tagging the books for, does this support our SEL benchmarks? Does this support the social justice standards? Does this support, as you mentioned, the content integration? So it was a protocol that we followed and a process that we followed, and then we kind of had to make some tough decisions too, because, you know, teachers love books, and you can't pick them all.
So you mentioned something that I guess I did not appreciate, you know? And I'm sorry to say, when I think of the librarians, I think of them helping the kids in school. But they were, they were participating in what you're doing as well, so they're more than just showing the kids how to use a library.
Absolutely. They were instrumental in helping us.
I don't think, I don't think we, personally, I don't think I appreciated it, that they do as much as they do. So I'm glad that you brought that up. The other thing is, you had the illustration, when your first slide did that tree, and you mentioned something about that, but I didn't quite catch it.
So the criteria that we used when selecting the texts, we wanted to make sure that, well, we had actually a set of criteria that we, we were using to vet the texts. We didn't want to just select texts based on feelings. So we tried to anchor into documents that the district was already using, that we knew our teachers would be familiar with, and so that Culturally Responsive Sustaining Framework, we know that those four guidelines are informing our district priorities, so we felt like that was a really good place to start this year. And so the welcoming and affirming environment portion, and then the inclusive curriculum and assessment portion, those were the two that we really tried to highlight, because that's all about affirming identity and, you know, highlighting multiple perspectives and the voices of sometimes marginalized people and authors that we don't necessarily put in front of students.
Great, well, thank you. Yeah, it's, it seems like everything we do is highly integrated across, you know, many levels, you know, horizontally and vertically. So that, that's, I think that brings to the high level of education that we provide. So.
Mark?
Catherine?
It kind of prompted a thought, if I may. So I watch these, I watch this show on Animal Planet called Dr. Jeff, Rocky Mountain Vet. And then one day I was looking at the program guide, and I saw there was another vet show. And I can't think of her name, but she's up in Alaska. And when you were talking about the books, the I Survived books, about the different locations based on where you live, how you live, and I, and I never gave it any thought, but I was watching the Australian vet, and some of the people that she, the pet owners that she helps, they live in such remote areas that she had to get her, she got her pilot's license so she could fly there. And she sometimes picks up the animals and brings them back to her, to her vet hospital. So when, you know, when you were speaking there, it's like, when I was watching that, I thought, well, of course, you know, something like that would have to happen, but I never gave it conscious thought, that somebody who lives in Alaska would, would practice veterinary medicine differently than somebody in Den, in Denver, I think he is. And so when you can bring it way down to like elementary school level, like, boy, I never thought of that, I think it's a great base for that interaction, overlap, everything that you were saying in regard to how you're making your choices. And, you know, when you're so much older than elementary school, and you can have those aha moments, like, why didn't I think of that? That's quite an advantage, to be able to be exposed to that at a much younger age. So I think that's, I think that's just really smart, and it's appreciated. And it's subtle, too, you know? It's fun. You're learning about different locales and things like that, and different situations you wouldn't think of in, you know, living here. So it's a great mind-expander, and I really like that component of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Board members? All right, well, thank you so much for all the work you've done, and I appreciate that you're going to spend your summer putting this all together.
Yes, we will. We are too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Student representative report. Lila Harvey, Ms. Harvey?
Good evening. So just to begin with some updates here at PHS, last week, 94 current juniors were inducted into National Honor Society. Mr. Gabey's 20th Century War class went on a field trip to Mount Hope, and senior Ball was at Casa Larga a couple of weeks ago. Great fun for all the seniors to be with all their friends, you know, just a couple more weeks left until graduation. Varsity lacrosse players spent time working with third and fourth grader, fourth grade lacrosse players at the elementary schools to teach them different drills and teamwork skills. The varsity baseball team beat Fairport during the annual strikeout cancer game, and the track and field team has sectionals this Saturday at Hilton High School. Tonight is senior night for Unified Basketball as well. And the PHS music department has been quite busy with the Corral Concert being last evening, and the spring band concert is tonight. At Bay Trail, students from all of the different grade levels participated in a field trip to the Susan B. Anthony House to learn all about social justice. And last Thursday night as well was the eighth grade spring concert. The school store club presented donations to both the Center for Disability Rights and to children awaiting parents. The school store sells school supplies, gum, and other related things to raise a profit to donate to charities. At Scribner, the Scribner Arts and Education Fest is tomorrow evening, where students' artwork will be on display to showcase the importance of enhancing the arts and curriculum. Mrs. Howard's class honored Mrs. Harris on National School Nurse Appreciation Day. And at Cobbles, at both Scribners and Cobbles, students were able to see the people participating in the Ride for Missing and Exploited Children, a great cause. And last night was the String Fling Concert, and was also Mrs. Kennedy's last time conducting before her retirement. At Harris Hill, the chorus sang the National Anthem at last night's, or at last Friday night's Red Wings game. Third graders are learning all about metamorphosis by raising caterpillars, and fifth graders went to the high school to have a fun swimming party in the pool. And also, Mrs. Ramsey's class is learning how to independently run their own reading circles. And finally, at Indian Landing, Mrs. Diaz's class had a fun popsicle party to celebrate receiving 120 class compliments from staff around the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions for Ms. Harvey? Great, thank you so much. Okay. Where are we here? Okay, superintendent's report. Dr. Putnam is not able to attend today, so Dr. Kenny?
Thank you. Dr. Putnam is not here tonight, so I will stand in his place and present the superintendent's report. We have a variety of things to report on, and of course, it's always difficult, as Dr. Putnam says, to follow Lila in any reports, but I'm going to do my best. So just to reiterate, we did have 94 Penfield High School students inducted into the National Honor Society, and in fact, we have one with us tonight. Lila Harvey was one of the 94, so congratulations.
Congratulations.
And congratulations to all the students. We also have members of our first, our PHS Robotics Team here, and there is a rumor that they first, they are the primary people to convince Assemblywoman Jennifer Lunsford to create legislation for the November 8 Steam Day in New York State. So our first robotics team is getting all the credit for that, just so you know. Congratulations, and thank you for your advocacy. It's outstanding work. We, if you haven't seen the district homepage, we have, this, this picture was up on it, and it's just a beautiful picture and an example of a wonderful event where we recognize an outstanding senior in our district. So congratulations to Zippora Sparkman. She recognizes Penfield's outstanding senior at the annual Dr. Michael O'Loughlin Outstanding Senior Dinner, which includes the superintendent student from neighboring districts as well as the student's parents. So it sounds like it's a wonderful event, and I'm sure that Dr. Putnam and Zippora had a wonderful time together. I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Steven Ettenhausen, who generously donated a con Selmar oboe to our music program. I'm assuming that's a very big deal. We appreciate this donation, and we know our students will benefit and put this instrument to good use. Just some general PCSD updates for everybody. Of course, we have to provide some updates on COVID-19. Most know by now that we, our COVID exposure notifications are not happening through direct emails. They're being made in Infinite Campus. The goal of this move was to reduce the emails. The parents were getting sometimes three, four, maybe on the upwards of five emails a day, letting them know that their students have, were maybe exposed during a class. That's for most of our secondary students. So now parents can log into Infinite Campus and check for notifications regarding COVID outbreaks in the classroom. And last but not least, K-5 parents will still receive email notifications because elementary students really only have one point of contact, our primary classroom teacher in the buildings. So we'll continue to monitor that. It continues to be an adventure, but it's something we're continuing to take seriously. Some program reminders coming your way. Tomorrow night, we have a wonderful event scheduled, a community conversation that Dr. Potter, soon-to-be Dr. Potter, had organized for us. And it's a community conversation promoting an environment free of harm, discriminatory language, and practices. It's from five to six, or excuse me, 5:00 to 8:30 tomorrow night in our Penfield High School auditorium, and it will feature a presentation by our guest speaker, Dr. Sean Eversley Bradwell, and it will be followed by a Q and A session. So all members of the community are invited to attend. We look forward to, to the event. We know it's going to be wonderful. And we are hosting a virtual presentation by Dr. Ben Lee on Growing Up Asian and Parenting Asian Teenagers: Issues of Identity and Visibility in Community, from 7:00 to 8:00 Tuesday, May 31 via Teams. So that will be virtual. Any questions?
Board members, any, okay, well.
I was just going to ask, is the presentation going to be recorded?
It is. Yes, it is. Yes, you're talking about tomorrow night's presentation. Tomorrow night's presentation?
No, no, next Tuesday, the 31st.
Oh, Dr. Lee's.
Yes. It is? I just know we have our 9th through 11th grade convocation.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Other questions? Catherine?
A question and a comment. Steve, is it from 5:00 to 8:30 tomorrow, or is-
Tomorrow, it's 6:00 to 8:30.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, 6:00 to 8:30.
Clarify that, okay.
At Penfield High School.
Okay.
Right here.
Regarding the advocacy for Steam Day, in November, I guess it is now?
November 8.
November 8. I want the group to know who's here and worked on that. As Mark Elidge and I both know, being on Legislative Committee, it is not easy to advocate and then get results that you're looking for. So hats off to you. That is, that's amazing, and you should be very proud of yourselves for the work you did to make that happen. I know that Assemblywoman Lunsford helped, of course, but you brought it to her attention, you did the work, and so that's another kudos to you. I can't let that one go either.
Any other questions? And I would just say that it's fantastic. You had the success you had. Advocacy is a long-term endeavor. I mean, there's more things I'm sure you would like to advocate for. It's a long-term endeavor. It's building relationships with your representatives, you know, kind of on the personal level, so they know you and understand you. And so I would just say, keep it up, you know? Keep going, you know? If you know what you want, it may take a few more years to get the next achievement, but just keep at it, because you already, you already have built your credentials with them. Any other questions?
All right, well, I am going to pass the clicker down to Dr. Maloney. All right, well, I am going to pass the clicker down to Dr. Maloney for our instructional updates, elementary and middle school schedules.
Thank you, Dr. Kenny. So this evening, I wanted to share with the community and families the most recent information relative to the elementary and middle school schedule changes. And as a reminder, I think it's important to reiterate that as a district, we review and revise schedules annually. This year, we had district-wide goals in making these changes. And I'm just going to quickly review these goals. Working to put all six buildings on the same day rotation, to help with sharing faculty and staff across the buildings. As many of us know, we are currently living in a staffing shortage. And finding substitutes, teachers, clerical, really, anyone is a challenge. And so being able to be fiscally responsible and maximize that staffing was a huge piece of ensuring that all of the six buildings are on the same day rotation. And then that consistency that this creates for families who have multiple students in multiple schools. As well as ensuring that there is dedicated time for social emotional learning. And I know I talked quite a bit about that last time. I'm going to dig in a little bit more during this presentation. And then as well as to increase opportunities for job embedded professional development. At the elementary level, we're excited to be building in district-wide common planning time for the grade levels as well as the special area teachers. And to review our process, initially, we gathered feedback from grade level and department teams through their building leadership cabinets. We developed draft schedules in collaboration with the building administrators. Those draft schedules were then vetted to the teachers through the April faculty meetings. And there were online surveys which allowed teachers the opportunity to provide feedback. We went through all of that feedback, very, very helpful feedback, and reworked the schedules based on the feedback and made the modifications and prevented, presented those modified schedules during the May faculty meetings. And I have the, the last two bullets bolded and in red because that's where we're currently at in the process in terms of continuing to modify the schedules and communicate changes which impact families. So last week, I met with a parent who had some very specific questions related to the elementary schedule change. And she recommended that I give families more background into the differences across the four elementary buildings, current schedules. So I'm going to dig in a bit to the why related to these changes. I recognize that the graphic on the slide is not easy to read. And please know that I will walk you through the specifics. What I really want people at home and folks who are watching to focus in on are the colors and the color blocks. This, because this graphic represents a comparison of the fourth grade schedules at each of the elementary schools. So the first column of blocks is Cobbles. The second column is Harris Hill. The third column is Indian Landing and the fourth column is Scribner. And again, this is simply fourth grade, I just pulled the fourth grade schedules. The colors represent specific content areas or instructional blocks. So for example, the purple is recess, the orange is lunch, the lighter green is math. So as we take a look at this graphic, I first want you to notice the inconsistencies as you look from column to column. For example, the first column has two gray blocks. But the other three schools only have one gray block. One of the whys for this change are these inconsistencies in instructional minutes across the buildings. So take a look at the yellow blocks. These yellow blocks represent the ELA, Social Studies and Science Units that Sheena and Shane were just here presenting on, those are integrated blocks. And if we dig in deeper, if we hone in, Cobbles has a hundred and five minutes there. And you'll see that it's spread out four different little blocks. Harris Hill has a hundred and twenty minutes across two blocks. Indian Landing has ninety-five minutes, one big, one large block. And then Scribner has a hundred and twenty-five minutes across three different yellow blocks. So that's a range of thirty minutes from ninety-five to a hundred and twenty-five. And if you stop and think, over the course of a school year, those minutes add up over a hundred and eighty days a year. So this is just one of the inconsistencies that we are looking to be consistent across the four buildings across grade levels. Let me show you another. Varying start times and dismissal times. So you'll see, there's a blue circle that just popped up there. Three of the buildings start at eight-fifty. If we could zoom in, you would see that, that that start time there is eight-fifty AM. And then one of the buildings starts at eight-fifty-five. Oh, five minutes, right? Then you look at the bottom, two of the buildings end instruction at three-twenty. One of the buildings ends instruction at three-fifteen and another at three-twenty-five. So again, there's a range of fifteen minutes across those differing times. And added up over the course of the school year, again, those minutes begin to pile up. How can we maximize, there's three hundred and ninety minutes in a school day at the elementary level? Okay, one more. So as we, as, well, maybe two. As we collaborated on a common schedule across the elementary buildings, we also worked to build large blocks of instructional time. Feedback from teachers indicated that it's much easier to have large blocks of instructional time. The small blocks present challenges for teachers. So you'll see down there on the bottom where the blue circle just showed up. That's a ten-minute block. This one over here is a twenty-minute block. Those are challenging for teachers to be able to set up an activity, dig into the activity, close up the activity, and particularly at the, at the elementary level. Last, I know I talked at length at the last board meeting about the SEL block and what will occur during that time. And as I shared last time, you see this reflected in our schedule. So three of the elementary schools start the day, start the school day with dedicated time for SEL, or as it's sometimes referred to as morning meeting. So in this visual, the red blocks are the SEL blocks. So you will see at Cobbles, the first column has the red SEL block. And it occurs at the beginning of the day. The second column, Harris Hill, has the red block occurring a little bit later than Cobbles. The third column has the red SEL block occurring first thing in the morning and then again in the middle of the day. Whereas the last column, Scribner, does not have a red block currently built in the schedule. So again, as we are emerging from the pandemic, our students' SEL needs are at an all-time high. And as a district, we are committed to incorporating that dedicated SEL time within the elementary schedule across all of the buildings. Which takes me to the most recent draft of the elementary schedule. So the most recent draft has the following. The social emotional learning block has been moved to the morning, it is a thirty-minute block. Lunch and recess, thirty minutes each. Core ELA occurs in the morning for primary grades, that was a huge piece of feedback. Our Super Kids Program, that's the program that we use for our core ELA. Those of you at home who have kiddos who are using the program, you've probably heard the characters' names, the kids get so excited. That really is meant to be done in the morning. Specials, PE, music, art, and library will be consistent, they will be forty-five minutes in length. Ensembles will occur during the instructional day. And just a reminder that that school day is eight-fifty AM to three-twenty PM. And like I shared, that's six and a half hours, three hundred and ninety minutes. So I've had some questions from the, from families and from community members around, what does, can you be more transparent with the time and how it is spread out throughout, throughout the grade levels and throughout the day? So you'll see this chart, there's two charts, one for grades K-two and then the next slide is three-five. But it shows how that three hundred and ninety minutes is broken up across the day. And there is time built in for the morning routine. And there is time built in for the dismissal routine, particularly at the primary level. I learned a lot about snow pants and snow boots and how long it takes to put snow pants and snow boots on twenty little first graders or kindergarteners. And so you can see, there's consistency K-two and then consistency three-five in terms of those blocks. And how the instructional minutes are spread out across the day. All right, so the middle school schedule, so shifting to the middle school. The most recent draft of the schedule, which we are working with nine periods in the day, each forty minutes in length. We've shortened the passing time to four minutes, that came from feedback from teachers around, really, it's very valuable feedback. The students, because they have their backpacks with their computers, they can now carry their backpacks around. Students aren't stopping at their lockers. So there's time, that, that creates more unstructured time for more behaviors to occur. So taking a look at shortening the passing time. Lunches, right now in the draft, we're working in our forty minutes in duration. That includes time for recess. Restructuring a flex period based on the positive attributes of home base, which is what Bay Trail had a few years ago. A sixth grade programming shift to allow for students to receive targeted ELA reading and math interventions, similar to the elementary intervention model. And then the sixth grade ELA course will integrate all sixth grade ELA standards, reading, writing, speaking, and listening. Previously, there was a separate sixth grade reading course and the standards were separated. We also, New York State mandates that one-point-seven-five credits of CTE courses. Students take one-point-five-seven credits of CTE courses at middle school. And this is a minor change in working with the family and consumer science teachers and the art teachers. We've shifted, and I'll show you a chart that shows, so you can visually see how students will meet those one-point-seven-five credits over the course of their middle school career. We also, art instruction will occur in seventh, sixth and seventh grades with the option for an eighth grade elective. So here is the visual of the specials at the middle school currently, the draft that we're working in. And I mentioned the minor change with the family and consumer science, ten weeks at both sixth and seventh grades. At the last meeting, the draft we were working in had twenty weeks of family and consumer science at sixth grade. There's also a major change. All eighth grade students, all eighth grade students will now take two elective courses over the course of the year. We had been working on that and have found a way to make that happen. So each elective course will be a semester long and every, it will meet every other day. This includes students who participate in performance ensembles. So students will not need to choose between participating in performance ensembles and electives. In fact, an email went out this evening to all seventh grade families as well as to seventh grade students on how the students go about ranking those eighth grade elective courses. And I'm really excited to share the elective courses. So the elective courses include, for art, art explorations. Students will explore and create art using various techniques, art processes and materials. Students will create art with drawing, painting, printmaking, collage, metal tooling, scratch art, sculpture, and clay. Ceramics and sculpture is another option. Students will create art in three dimensions using clay, papier-mache, wood, wire, and found objects. Students will learn about artists and draw inspiration from their work. So those are the two art courses that students can select. The business course is titled The Business of Play. Students will focus on the behind-the-scenes aspects of sports and video gaming. Students will learn about statistics, strategy, advertising, career options, logo design, and health concerns in both pathways through computer programs and simulations. Students will be able to extend their learning by taking sports management, sports marketing, and/or game design courses in ninth through twelfth grade at PHS. So the business teacher, the same is true with art. The eighth grade teachers have really been collaborating with the high school teachers so that they're creating feeder courses to help programs at the high school. Home and Careers, so this is called Hacks for Facts. Get it? Hacks for, okay. So, but it's, it's Hacks for Life. Students will learn about different aspects of their life, including cooking and making healthy choices, selecting a career path, and using a sewing machine to make items to donate to the community and more. And then two courses for music, piano and keyboard, piano slash keyboarding. This course really is thinking about all the recording technology that we have. And I know you're all familiar with the recording studio at the high school. So students will learn and refine piano knowledge and foundational techniques. Students will practice a variety of traditional pop and contemporary music appropriate to their current ability level, accommodating beginning, intermediate, and advanced-level piano students. Students will also utilize recording technology to create piano-based projects. And then the songwriting course. Students will compose, arrange, and produce original music using music notation and digital audio workstation software. This student-centered course focuses on student strengths, allowing students to compose music for voice, guitar, piano, or a selection of other instruments. So I don't know about you, but if I were a seventh grader, I don't know which courses I would take. I think I would want to take them all. Our teachers did an amazing job designing these courses and creating courses. So just, as I wrap up, just to circle back to the process. Again, we are continuing to modify, collaborate with teams on finalizing the schedules and communicating with families regarding changes. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Thank you, thank you. Board members, questions? Lisa?
You're not surprised, right? Actually, I have two questions. Do you recall how long ago it was when we actually had a dedicated SEL time in the elementary level? I might be putting on the spot and I apologize. I'm just curious, because I remember, I mean, this is pre-common core, right? When we had to do that big change of big ELA blocks and, because there used to be morning meeting and there used to be show and tell and there, and then we sort of, you know, things got very academicized, that's not a word, but you know what I mean? And we moved away from that. So I was just like, I'd be interested to know.
Let me do a little digging for you, Lisa. That's a really good question.
Because I think sometimes people think this is new and it, I don't think it's new. I feel like we're trying to get back to
Yes.
a little bit more focused on making connections with kids and.
And I've been working with kindergarten teachers on some of the preparation for UPK. And the kindergarten teachers are so excited to have time for their dramatic play units because they have had to package everything up with COVID. And now everything's coming, they're getting it all back out. And having a dedicated time to be able to build in that, the dramatic play that they haven't been able to. And Tasha and I have been working with the Children's Institute. We're so excited around our partnership in being able to create a toolkit for teachers. Dabney McCleary, one of our K-12 social workers, has been meeting with each of the grade level teams at the elementary around implementing second step. And the teachers are so excited to be able to just ensure that, that, that there's time for all those components of, of SEL.
I think it's foundational too. So we start to think about wellness and well-being. And we think about our youngest learners having an opportunity to start their day with play or start their day interacting with their peers. We're building and developing socialization skills. And if we think about being in a pandemic and not having access to peers or teachers, like this really brings forward foundationally everything that we believe in relative to how to create healthy students, right? We're growing healthy students. And it's aligned with our board's priorities and goals around the whole student. So I think that this work is really just about making those connections, Lisa, to your point. This isn't brand new, but it's integral. It's integral to making sure that we are growing healthy students in our schools.
And Lisa, to your point, I can picture, I can picture the. And Lisa, to your point, I can picture, I can picture the morning meeting book with the red cover, with the red square cover. I can picture being at Harris Hill when Mark was all, was very excited about bringing that into teachers. And I'm trying to remember how, when that was.
I remember having to drive the show and tell thing to school that I forgot to put in the bag, you know? It's like, oh! So I mean, I know we used to do it. It's just, right, it was before everything got like, oh, everyone has to learn to read at three and all these, you know, crazy academic standards and, yeah. Well, thank you. I think it would be interesting to share that. I have a second question, but I don't know if someone else has a question.
Go ahead, I can wait.
Okay, this is a quick one, I hope. What was it? Oh, so if an eighth grader is not in an ensemble, can they have two electives?
All eighth graders can have two electives.
Ooh, that's exciting.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah. Mr. Bonnington, he is able to get very creative with how he sees schedules. And it was a meeting of the minds and we got together and we said, let's make this happen. And the music teachers, they had some ideas. We kept working and plugging and were able to make it happen. So we're super excited. I got a couple of text messages from folks who got there. I did an email tonight along with a phone call telling folks to check their emails. So I've heard from folks, it went out, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, exciting.
Okay, I don't have a question, I just have a comment, a couple. First, I just want to say, I know we're so committed to the whole student that I think it's really awesome that our sixth grade kiddos that need the intervention services are not missing out on electives because they were missing out on those. And I know that as a teacher, that's where my kids that struggle, that's where they excel. And I think that's just, we're practicing what we preach. So I think that's huge there. I also love the whole idea of choice. I think I want to go back to being an eighth grader in Penfield. Like, I would actually take music. I'm not, I cannot sing, but those musical electives look really cool. And I think our kids are going to be really excited. And also just kudos to all the collaboration that you've done. This has been a huge project. And I love that you just keep going back and you're listening to all the stakeholders and you aren't giving up and you keep digging and digging and digging and digging. So thank you for all the work that you've done for our kids.
Thank you for all of your support. It's, it's really been incredible.
Board members? So I would just add, add to that, you know, I looked through this, I looked through your process. I mean, you know, processes have to start somewhere and you've got to have a sequence of, you know, who, what, if certain stakeholders can't make it work, then you kind of have, you can't go any farther. And you focused with your, with staff and the faculty because if they can't make it work, it's kind of, it's kind of a point. But, you know, you continued on and I really appreciate the fact, again, we had a lot of parent feedback and, you know, you presented the last meeting, you presented this meeting. And I know, you know, I remember reading some specific feedback about parents who want their kids to have music and have the choice. And originally, that, that graphic where you had the ensemble and then the electives in eighth grade, it was just ensemble or electives. And so you, you made that happen. So I, I think that's, that's great. And I looked through this and, you know, I guess parents who see what their kids have or don't have might see it differently. But I would just, I'm struggling to see what's been lost in here. I think we've added choice, we've added consistency and efficiency, which I think our community expects us to be, you know, have, to look for improvements, be fiscally responsible. I mean, that's, that's not what happens at budget time. That's what happens year round. Finding, you know, you save the money year round through constantly finding ways to be more efficient and optimize what you have. And this is what you've been doing. And then, again, adding the variety, adding the choice, adding the SEL periods. And then, as you mentioned about the students who have, who need additional counseling, I really think that, you know, this is, I see more, I see lots of gains and I'm struggling to see real loss now. My kid's a senior, so I probably don't see what maybe other parents see.
Well, and Mark, you know, anytime there's change, it's bumpy. It, it, change is hard. And we're just coming out of a pandemic. So there is, and we do acknowledge that, that anytime you change a schedule, that it's hard. So I'm so incredibly appreciative of the teachers for taking the time to share their feedback, for entrusting and being honest and vulnerable in their feedback because we couldn't, we couldn't have come up with something that so many people are happy about and excited about if our teachers hadn't, hadn't dug in and really shown up for us. Thank you.
Give it to you. All right, thank you so much. I guess this concludes the.
You're supposed to say it.
That concludes their special report.
Hey, your special report, thank you. You know, I can't, legally, I can't go on until you say that.
I was waiting for the nudge, I wasn't sure what the timing was.
Let's see, where are we? We are on.
Six A, I think.
Yeah, we're on facilities.
Yeah.
Thank you, which is six A. It is recommended the board approve the following land use agreement. I guess I'll read this and then have motion in a second and then there's discussion if someone wants to provide the, any other explanation that's necessary as part of this. That might be the time to do it. So whereas the Board of Education for the Penfield Central School District is the owner of a parcel of land, approximately forty acres, that's thirteen sixty-four Jackson Road, is, and being a portion of the tax, the tax map. And whereas David Woodward seeks to license the property as farmland, has negotiated a land use agreement for such use with the district. And whereas the board has determined that the property is not needed for district purposes during the term of the agreement, which shall be from the date of the grant or approval until November first, 2022, unless otherwise agreed to in writing by the parties. And whereas the board has reviewed the proposed agreement, now therefore be resolved that the board determines that the property is not needed for school district purposes during the term of the agreement. The agreement for the use of the property for the purpose of farming and other related purposes are hereby approved. The superintendent is hereby authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the district. And this resolution be, shall take effect immediately. So we have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so any questions or comments? And I'd ask, you know, does anyone here want to make a comment on this?
The background on this, I believe Dr. Driffl has worked with Dave Woodward to identify what his needs are with the area that was, that was granted in the land agreement. And it seems like it would benefit both parties. So there's been some conversation about this and background work done.
And, and to, I guess to make it maybe more straightforward, this is the land we purchased for the bus garage with the, you know, the time it takes, you know, we are in this process. So the time it takes to go through the architectural designs, estate approvals, will not be quick enough for us to need it in this timeframe. So this, this land is being, is being not used. And so this gives, this makes it productive land, you know, which is what we want to do, we want to make a productive land. Now, again, it does not impede our ability to, to proceed with the building of the bus garage. And this, once, when we are ready to build, we will be able to use that land because we've made sure that there's no agreements that are interfering with that. So I have a motion and a second. So with all those in favor, any opposed? Motion carries. Health and Safety Committee Charter is recommended that the board, that the board approves the Penfield Health and Safety Committee Charter as submitted. Per the Commissioner's Regulations, it is necessary to re-adopt the Penfield Health and Safety Committee Charter every year, each year. The charter was reviewed by the committee at their May fifth, 2022 meeting and re-adopted. The charter was given to the Board of Education prior to this meeting for review. So we have a motion and a second that the Penfield Health and Safety Committee Charter is approved as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Policies for First Read, we had.
I can speak to that, sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay. I know who I'll go to next. We have a new seven, seventy-six thirty Committee on Special Education, Committee on Preschool Special Education Policy. And then there's seventy-six forty Student Individual, Individualized Education Program. And then there's a regulation associated with that, which is a supporting document. So I guess I'm looking for comments, and that's yours.
Sorry. So the policy committee has been working on our five-year manual review. So this is part of our review. So the new policy, seven six three oh is actually not technically a new policy, but it's a required policy. And we're trying to line up the numbers with Erie Policy Review. So that's why you'll see a couple of policies for deletion. But the policies for deletion are being combined and put into policy seven six three zero. And we're just trying to clean up some wording, especially in the other two, to make it a little bit more user-friendly and it's, a lot of the policies are very.
Legal ease and it's just a little more like modern day.
Right, yes.
It's like how we speak now.
Correct. So I just wanted to clarify that because there are a few policies for deletion, but we're not really, we're just moving them around. And I can actually email, I can email something again because I did that the last time, so it wasn't confusing. I'll make a note to do that. Does anyone have questions on that?
All right. And since that's First Read, we will revisit this at the next meeting.
Right, and we did have some comments from Kristen, I think, so we can, thank you for those. We can address those at our next meeting.
Next is the Policies for Deletion, which Lisa has touched upon. It is recommended the board delete the following policies from the, the policy manual. Seventy-six thirty-one, Appointment and Training of Committee on the Special, on Special Education Members, along with a regulation, basically a supporting document that goes along with it. And then seventy-six thirty-two, Appointment and Training of Committee on Preschool Special Education Members. So as Lisa touched on, we're really just moving content around. So we have a motion and a second that policies seventy-six thirty-one, seventy-six thirty-one R one, and seventy-six thirty-two be deleted from the district policy manual as submitted effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, visitor speaking time. We, as the board, appreciate the comments of the community during the public session of the board meeting. Every individual that speaks has a vested interest in the education of our students. Your comments are important to us, but matters involving particular individuals or specifics in negotiation are not permitted during public session. Concerns will be referred to the district administration for follow-up or action when appropriate. Visitors may sign up to speak at a meeting by emailing the district clerk, Sharon Urk Fitz, with their name, address, phone number, and the topic for which they wish to address. Registration will open at eight AM on the Friday before the meeting and remain open until three PM on the Tuesday of the board meeting. Speakers are expected to identify themselves with their name and address before presenting and limit their comments to three minutes or less. A total of thirty minutes will be allotted for visitor speaking time. The board will not be responding to comments during the session, but please be assured that we are listening. Finally, we ask that all speakers, we ask all speakers to model the conduct we expect from our students in the school daily. Please be respectful of others in your words, conduct, and demeanor. Thank you. So we have one speaker today, Mr. Carmen, Carmen Leonardo.
Thank you.
So welcome, Mr. Leonardo. Please speak, please state your name and address.
Sure, my name is.
And please ask you to sit so you can go into, speak into the microphone.
Oh, sure.
So, because, because this is broadcast and recorded, we need to make sure that your voice is captured.
My name is Carmen Leonardo and my address is nineteen fifteen Penfield Road. Could you hear me okay?
Yep, thank you.
Well, one of the comments I wanted to make that I wasn't prepared to make this evening, but I will make now, which kind of lends itself to what I'm about to tell you, is that when you're conducting your meeting, we can't hear a word you're saying. And frankly, the only person that we can hear is Mrs. Maloney, so thank you. I represent a recently formed group called the Penfield United for Education Excellence. And it's a group made up of parents, community members, and educators. So after learning about the anticipated schedule changes to accommodate the implementation of the SEL curriculum and the significant parent concerns with the changes and the curriculum itself, I attended the last board meeting to hear the presentation. And I did hear the administration go on and on about the planning and the replanning to accommodate the changes, very much like tonight. At no time has the administration or the board deliberately sought parental input on the upcoming curriculum and schedule changes. I'm sure you have received lots of input and questions, but you did not seek input. And those are two different things. On May sixth, I sent all of you an email on behalf of this group, the Penfield United for Education Excellence, requesting that a parent committee be formed to review and input the planning and the curriculum. In reply, I received a wonderful email from Mr. Putnam, which concluded that no parental committee would be formed. If Mr. Putnam was here, I would be directing this to him as well as Mrs. Maloney. It doesn't matter that SEL has been part of the curriculum for several years. And it doesn't matter that you change schedules all the time. I'm here to tell you that collectively, you have a transparency deficit. And this is just one example. Parents have a statutory right to review all curriculum content and a right to involvement in everything that you do. And so I request that you reevaluate the proposal in my previous email and form a committee to review the SEL curriculum and the proposed schedule changes. With regard to other examples of the lack of transparency, have you, the board, read
Thank you, Ms. Leonardo.
Thank you. Thanks for helping to make my point.
Okay, next up is the committee reports. So the Monroe County Score Association Committee is the only one, oh, I take that back. Yeah, it was a legislative committee. And that would be me. Let me get to this. So the, you know, the budget was approved and there, you know, they, the good news is that this, the governor and the state and the legislature have main, kept their commitment to bringing foundation aid up to where it is supposed to be, you know, and, now the state, but the districts, and again, the foundation aid, not every district was at the same level of deficit. Some districts had more deficits, some had less. And there's a variety of reasons behind that, which, which are complicated and I can't, couldn't tell you exactly there. But those districts that were fully funded received the minimum three percent increase. So I think the thing is, we have to anticipate that we are getting more increase than normal because they're bringing us up to the par. But once we reach the par, that's not going to continue. And I think this has been fortunate that we're doing, that we've had additional increase over the time of high inflation. But again, we have to be, to be as, find opportunities for efficiency as, as we talked about earlier because that will not continue. Now, the other thing they did do is they extended for another year the waiver on retirement earnings for the adable salary cap. I'm, I'm sorry, but the CTE adable salary cap did not go through. Now, the retirement earnings, and I think Barb, you might be able to explain this better than anybody. But it's basically. But it's basically, it's, it's how much you can earn and still, you know, take, receive your pension, correct?
That is correct.
Which then allows us to.
There's a cap.
It helps with, maybe people retired, want to do some substituting, and they can do that without putting their retirement benefits in jeopardy. Whoops, I'm sorry, I just bumped, bumped this. And again, there's, there's grants, there's, I keep doing this, I'm sorry. You know, the special education shift, cost shift was extended, and it will continue to cost school districts more. You know, we are still, special education is still really coming through us. There, we talked about the zero emission buses, which we talked about the last meeting. There, that is going to continue. There will be an environmental bond that will go for the voter, before the voters in November, this is at the state level, to allot 500 million for zero emission buses, which then will, you know, allow us to continue on, because one bus is kind of a novelty in the sense of, it's, it's a good, it's a learning opportunity. But to really make a difference is when you really end up rotating your entire fleet to be zero emission. And so this will help all districts continue that process. And then the New York State Energy Research Department Development Authority is required to develop a roadmap and report out, they've got four years to report out, the availability of zero emission buses. So basically, you know, helping make sure that all those concerns were addressed, that, that we've raised, that everybody's raised, are addressed, so they can be successful in rotating all our buses. I mean, there's more, but those are the, I think, the main points I wanted to cover. Which brings us to the district committee meetings, and there was the health and safety Ms. Harley?
Yep. So George did a great job, and I think the two biggest things from that was clearly our charter and then our district emergency plan that is up now for the public to see and will hopefully be able to adopt that in August. There was an update around construction, that our latest drawings for our transportation and facilities buildings are looking really good. Just that every building this summer will be getting some sort of update. The nurses reported that clearly since prom and spring break, we've had a little bit of a COVID surge, which is why we were getting all those emails. We had a chemical hygiene review, that looked really good. We had, our fire inspection was going to happen on Monday, which has already happened now at this point. And then we went over just our three-tier system that we have, and we're talking about guns or weapons in schools. And our first approach, obviously, is just looking at our whole student and making sure that we have that positive school climate. Our second tier is just targeting our kids that are at risk and making sure that they're receiving the supports that they need, whether that's through academic supports or SEL supports. And then our threat assessment and management team. And that we, we do have FBI agents that are designated special agents, and we're being actually referenced to how we apply this in our work. So go Penfield for that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? Which brings us to the vote results. Last Wednesday, last Tuesday was our budget vote and board member elections. The following are the results from the May 17th, 2022 budget vote and election as certified by the inspectors of the election. The Proposition 1, the 2022-23 budget passed with a, with 1,717 yes votes and 888 no votes. For the board, the candidates, Emily Belcher and Nicole Doily, were elected to three-year terms commencing on July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. Kristin Khan was elected to a term commencing on May 18th upon filling her oath of office through June 30th, 2023. And, and just the reason Krist, Ms. Khan starts earlier is because she is being assigned the vacancy. So, you know, the purpose of that is to fill that immediately, which is, which is the norm. So, again, congratulations to the, to the three candidates that were elected. And I also want to express our appreciation to the other candidates, because it is, does take a real commitment to be willing to come out and be on a board member and spend the time that the board members do spend throughout the year. So again, I want to thank them for their willingness to support the community. So there's no unfinished business. Is there any new business? And with that, may have a motion and a second that the meeting can be adjourned at 8:10 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.